Good evening, everyone. I will call the special counsel public hearing meeting to order. And first up, we'll have adoption of minutes.
Move the minutes of November 16th for special regular.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carry.
Move minutes received for council and committee, November 16th.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carry.
Move minutes be adopted for land use, November 16th.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carry.
Move minutes be adopted for public hearing, November 16th.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carry.
Minutes be received Finance Committee, November 23rd.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carry.
Move recommendations be adopted.
Second.
And all those in favor, opposed, carry. We'll now go into the public hearing portion of the evening. And Madam Clerk, number one, please.
The first bylaw is zoning amendment by law 18556. It's a portion of 16240 110th Avenue. The applicant is Irene Shimkat. The applicant is seeking to rezone the site from one acre residential to single-family residential. She is proposing to subdivide into six single-family lots, parkland, and one remainder lot for future subdivision.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I have two persons not wishing to speak, opposed to this bylaw. And I have two persons wishing to speak, one for and one against. First up is Mr. Greg Van Vliet.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name is Greg Van Vliet, and I am the son-in-law of the applicant Irene Shimkat. I'd like to read a letter written by her in support of this.
Could you just put the mic a little bit higher so that the people in the audience can hear as well?
We'll get that. My name is Mrs. Irene Shimkat, and I am writing to express my support for the proposed rezoning and subdivision of my property, 16240 110th Avenue. I'm a longtime resident of Surrey, and specifically Fraser Heights, having lived on this property since 1969. My late husband and I purchased the land in 1967, built a home that I live or still live on. We raised our two daughters there, enjoying what was once semi-rural lifestyle. As the years passed, we certainly realized that the area is becoming more desirable to live in, and we watched as redevelopment started taking place all around us. We understood that the future of the neighborhood, including our own property, was clearly going to be urban residential, as it was defined in the city's official community plan. In past decades, we were encouraged many times to sell our property so it could be included in redevelopment. This was the case in particular, beginning in 2003, when the property directly west of ours was sold, and a potential development concept plan, which included our lot, was created. However, we weren't yet ready to participate in sale. The application for rezoning the neighboring lot, based on that plan, was adopted by council in 2005. In that plan, both 109A Avenue and 162 Street remain incomplete until my property is redeveloped. The application before you includes a plan to complete 109A Avenue and 162 Street, as was intended and adopted in 2005. This application also includes the required completion of road widening and sidewalk construction on 110 Avenue in front of my property. Additionally, this application provides for required parkland dedication to allow completion of planned neighborhood access to JR Douglas Park from both 109A Avenue and 162 Street, as well as from an existing dead-end lane to the south on 162A Street. I'm a widowed pensioner, and while I have decided to sell off a portion of my property, I do intend to remain living in my home on the remnant lot for the foreseeable future. I have carefully consulted with the city prior to selling to ensure that this rezoning and subdivision fully meets the intentions of the OCP and benefits the neighborhood. I believe you will agree, and I respectfully request council approve this application as submitted. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Van Vliet. Next speaker, Fraser McKinnon. And as Mr. McKinnon makes his way to the podium, I should also acknowledge we have several pieces of correspondence on the -- on table relative to this application as well. Good evening, Mr. McKinnon.
Good evening. I'll just hand these up here.
Could you just hand it to the clerk?
My name is Fraser McKinnon, and for 20 years, I have lived on 10878 162A Street, which is the cul-de-sac behind the proposed development site. I am here to identify concerns and questions regarding the proposed development. On November 16th, council received a report on this proposal, so you may be aware that this development site is a heavily-treeted property containing 69 protected trees. And the applicant proposes to remove 62. Page four of this report indicates that the eastern adjacent area to the JR Douglas Park -- or is the JR Douglas Park. This report also indicates that parks, recreation, and culture has concerns with the pressure the project will place on the existing parks and recreation facilities in the area. I would agree with this concern, and wonder if the city has ever considered purchasing this land for parkland purposes. When we did our petition, which I will get to later, we met several residents that were involved in the original development of 162, and they said they had approached the city about having this parkland bought. So I will submit that to you again. Fraser Heights is a growing community, and the planning department recently held staff attend the Fraser Heights Community Association meeting, where they indicated that thousands more residents will be housed in this area in the future. And therefore, this is a rare opportunity to meet the parkland provision standard and create a legacy for current and future residents. The November 16 report includes a summary of tree preservation analysis. The outcome is a deficiency of 101 trees and a payment of $15,000 to the Green City Fund. I was recently trying to take down a tree in my backyard and became aware there's a $10,000 fine for taking down an unpermitted tree. I find $15,000 to be small compensation for what they're taking down. The section of this report on page six also indicates that the Boulevard trees will be planted on 100. This is part of their replanting program to compensate for taking down our trees. And I don't see how planting trees on 100 Boulevard is going to help us at all. 100 Avenue Boulevard is going to impact our Fraser Heights at all. The next issue which I was -- which we generated our petition on was the development of a six-meter-wide walkway that is going to connect 162A Street to the existing development that they're proposing here. Walkways in the area leading to the shopping center and within JR Douglas Park have been permanently closed due to issues of noise, vandalism, drug dealing, garbage, and loitering. To lose protected trees to build a walkway and then potentially close it will be a waste of time, money, and has an unnecessary negative impact on the environment. Instead, we suggest that the proposed walkway land should be incorporated into the development in exchange for the retention of a minimum of 10 trees. And in my report, or that you will look at later, we've identified 10 potential trees that can be saved. Okay, we have submitted a petition to this effect to the clerk's office, and we have over the signature of over 40 residents on it. As we were administering the petition, we heard other issues and concerns from our neighbors, including drainage problems they can experience -- they continue to experience since the 162 cul-de-sac was first developed. Hydrology becomes an issue for us due to the topography of the area. If the site is not developed with care and attention, the small number of trees being saved will be at risk, and further homes will experience drainage issues. Therefore, I urge council to reject this application at third reading tonight and return it back to staff with the applicant and the community to address our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Question on the applicant or the speaker?
No, Madam Mayor, to staff, in fact. I'm also from Fraser Heights, and just wanted to get some clarity in terms of the number of parks that we have in that particular neighborhood. I know we have Irma, we've got Fraser View Park, we've got the JR Douglas, and the Fraser Heights Park. So just in the context of the question, really, is the ratio of parkland in context to the density in that particular neighborhood? I'm not sure if the Parks Manager can answer that question.
Okay.
Through the mayor to Counselor Gill. I don't have the specific ratios, but I know that we're well-served in that area. We may in fact be able to bring up a map that just gives you a visual indication of the number of parks in that area. But it is quite -- it is quite well-served with parkland. But I can certainly come back to council with the specific ratios and provisions.
Okay.
But it is well-served.
Thank you. I see no other speakers relative to this application. Next bylaw, Madam Clerk.
Madam Mayor, did you need to call three times?
Pardon me?
Can you please call three times for speakers? Call for speakers.
Call for speakers? Is there anyone else? Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? Yes, sir? And you, Madam, as well? Okay. Two others.
I also live on -- sorry. My name is Al Pilatuck. I also live on the adjoining area just next to the park that is being proposed. I have concerns about the walkway in terms of the east-west direction. Recently, a walkway that was just over on 163 Street that allowed entrance from the east into JR Douglas Park was actually cut off by the city. And I'm thinking that if they're planning on making this development have an east-west walkway in behind this extension for these new homes, that it would be a poor decision, given that you've already blocked off one from an east-west direction because of vandalism in the past. So my concern is to make sure that that doesn't happen.
So you're against that walkway?
Yes, for sure. Definitely.
Thank you for your comments. And could I just pass that question through to the general manager of parks? Because I know that more than one resident has expressed concern regarding that particular walkway.
Madam Mayor, the walkway that was closed, or this proposed -- the proposed new walkway is to create connectivity from 162 down to 108th Avenue, and will also create connectivity into the south end of the Douglas Park.
So the north-south walkway is not my main concern, which is the vertical on that previous map? The vertical? Yep. That's not my main concern. It's the east-west, which is the horizontal at the base of the new development. That, I believe, would give no real purpose to anybody cutting through, because further east than this, there is a blockage of what used to be a walkway that has been cut off, has been blocked with a new chain link fence. Because of vandalism that was occurring to the property that adjoined the park, the fence was being destroyed, kicked in, vandalized, being tagged by individuals. So the east-west southern perimeter of JR Douglas on 163, if you can visualize that, over to the right on that map up there -- I'm not sure if you have a way of showing where that is -- has been blocked off by the city. And to try to put an east-west connection below to the south of the new development, in my mind, is silly. Why give access to people from JR Douglas to come in behind our properties, in effect, for access for vandalism, theft, et cetera?
Okay, thank you very much for your comments, sir. And is there anyone else after this next speaker wishing to speak to this bylaw? Were their hands up over here? No, sir, you've already spoken. You can't speak twice. Yeah, okay. Go ahead, ma'am.
Yes, good evening. My name is Katarzyna Laskowska. Should I spell this for you? I guess so.
I'm gonna guess yes.
Okay. I live at 161 94 109th Avenue. And I am very strongly opposed to this development because of the loss of tree canopy. Let me point out that tree count is not the same as tree canopy. You are not replacing the coverage that was provided by planting what amounts to little shrubs. Surrey's tree canopy has been disappearing at an alarming rate in the last few years. And there is an opportunity to do something about it, and to stop it, actually. This decision affects the ecology of the area. Not only the birds and the animals that live in those trees are affected, but so are the soil and drainage. Weed residents who have lived here for many years will be affected too, once you cut down those mature trees that are gone forever. We can no longer find shade and solace near them, nor can we admire their beauty. I propose that the council consider buying out this property and making it part of the nearby JR Douglas Park, which, in my opinion, is the most reasonable and logical thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. And I believe, sir, you --
My name is Neil Acheson. I am advisor to Irene Shimkat, the owner of the property. I have been working with Mrs. Shimkat for the past couple of years. I can say that what has been proposed in the development scheme before you has gone through numerous discussions prior to application with the city of Surrey. And the plan that is before you today reflects that, those discussions. The issues with respect to the walkway, particularly the east-west walkway, could be -- is a requirement of the city, and I'm sure that the applicant, if it was to remain as trees, would be satisfied with that. The issues with respect to drainage, this is -- this development will be subject to a servicing agreement to which drainage requirements will be addressed, and no doubt the drainage issues facing the area will be resolved. With respect to the trees, the trees, I'm sure that I was a longtime resident of Fraser Heights myself, dating back to 1986 through 1990, and when most of this area was undeveloped and treeted. I think the city has put together a very workable policy that balances the needs of developing housing for residents of Surrey with the needs to preserve trees. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, sir. First call for any other speakers. Second call, third and final call. Thank you. Next bylaw, Madam Clerk.
The next bylaw is zoning amendment by law 18557 and zoning amendment by law 18558. The addresses are 16624, 166466076104th Avenue, and 16587, 16615, 16647656878, Parkview Place and a portion of Parkview Place. There are several applicants in this proposal, and these applicants are seeking to rezone the site from one acre residential to comprehensive development, single-family residential and single-family residential twelfth. The applicants are proposing to subdivide into 53 single-family lots, one park lot, and retain two existing houses. In addition, there's a development variance permit being sought to reduce the lot with front and rear yard setbacks and very off-street parking requirements to allow for front-access driveways on lots with a lane and allow for front-access double garages.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have several pieces of correspondence relative to this application. I also have 48 people signed up, opposed, not wishing to speak, and I have several people signed up, eight, wishing to speak to this bylaw against. So I will call them in this order. Lois Mattson.
My name is Lois Mattson. I live in Fraser Heights.
Can you just move the mic down a little bit, Lois? Yeah, good.
I live in Fraser Heights. My husband and I are emphatically against the development of the RF-12 lots at Parkview Place or anywhere else in Fraser Heights. You are destroying our beautiful community with high-density homes and the tree removal, as evidenced already by what you have allowed to happen at Ruby Hill, which is at 160th and 104, the freeway entrance. That used to be the most beautiful entrance into Fraser Heights ever, and it's an absolute eyesore. Most everyone in Fraser Heights is appalled by the sight of Ruby Hill, huge homes on lots that are too small for the houses, minus all the trees. There isn't a tree left, and those were big evergreen trees that were there to start with. Congestion is already an issue to get in and around Fraser Heights at school time and at the end of the working day. Everyone drives their kids to school, and the Bothwell School that you're proposing that these kids are going to go to will be no different for those parents, as it is too far for elementary kids to walk. And let's be honest, you're not putting in 53 homes into this area. There is approximately another 70 going to go in. This is just phase one. Or maybe it's phase two, because somebody said other phases have already been passed. This is going to increase the amount of traffic already on 168th and 104th due to Pacific Academy. All those kids get driven in. You know there will be a minimum of two cars per house, and more if there are suites. Fraser Heights is like no other community. We are like an island locked between two major roads with limited entrance and exit. Most of us bought into Fraser Heights because of the ambience, the calm neighborhood, single-family homes with decent lots, and privacy between homes. And I ask that you please don't change the character of Fraser Heights. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Please. Counselor Gill? Did you have a question or a --
Just a clarification from staff. I believe that the property immediately to the south of the subject property was received third reading several weeks back. Am I correct in that, Mr. Planner? I just want to clarify. And was that application also a number of RF-12 lots? Just to clarify first.
Yes, through you, Madam Mayor, to Counselor Gill. There are actually two projects to the south. This one here and this one here, both proposing RF-12-type lots that both have third reading.
And could you just, if you could, just remind me how many lots were approved in each respective application? Do you recall?
The east-facing one is seven lots, and the west-facing one is around 15, 16 lots. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Pat Davidson.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Pat Davidson. I live at 10520 Glenwood Crescent East. My husband and I are opposed to RF-12 lots in the Parkview/104th Development. Fraser Heights is surrounded by major highways. The traffic on these highways cause vast amounts of toxic emissions to Fraser Heights. Therefore, we desperately need the trees in all of Fraser Heights to buffer us from the noise and the air pollution. Cutting down 236 trees goes against all the talk regarding climate change. We are to protect our environment, not destroy it. So let us keep Fraser Heights climate-friendly and say no to RF-12 lots. Will the RF lots provide the three parking spaces to provide -- pardon me, perform to by the bylaws? The bylaw says that they have to have, if you have a suite, three parking spots. Or will we be seeing unsightly front and backyards paved, like the many areas in Surrey? Pardon me. High density brings with it parking issues, overcrowding in schools, and puts major burdens on the utilities, roads, and hospitals. Clayton Heights, high density, is a prime example. So when the last tree is cut down, and the last fish eaten, and the last stream poisoned, all there is left is to eat the money. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me pass Ed MacIntosh to the stand. Oh, I'm sorry. I called up Ed MacIntosh.
My name is Ed MacIntosh. I live at 11136 156A Street. I've lived in Fraser Heights since July of 79, when my charming bride and the three little kids moved in there. And shortly thereafter, in the 1980s, shall we say, all hell broke loose in Fraser Heights. First of all, I'm going to give you just a little specific history here of how Fraser Heights really came to be and why we want it to stay that way. First of all, there was Dominion Construction that purchased 120-some-odd acres and was going to build an industrial park, and the community got involved. At the end of the day, they withdrew their proposal to build an industrial park, and what we now know as Fraser Glen was created. That subdivision set the tone and set the base for what was to happen for the future of Fraser Heights. Another incident came along a little while later where a developer wanted to come in and put strip mall and townhouses at 160th and 109th. That too got the community totally involved. That proposal too was withdrawn. Instead, we have the little shopping center that we have now at 108 and 160th, housing the Nesters Market being the main and a lot of others. And the subdivision around it became single-family residential, similar to the RF proposal, as similar to Fraser Glen. The third item that I want to refer to was the official community plan that was being done by all of Surrey at that time. And a large committee of residents from Fraser Heights, with the assistance of a professional planner, put together the plan for the whole of Fraser Heights. At that time, it stopped at 176. I understand it's been extended to Abbey Hill since. But at that time, it went to the 176 and for the whole of the Fraser Heights. And that was, as a matter of fact, I have it here, was issued in October 1986. So for damn near 30 years, we have had pretty much the development along the lines of what was going to be Fraser Heights. Now, I understand that some -- the odd one was mentioned here, a little RF-12 lot here and there, up against the freeway. If they have to be anywhere, that's where they would need to be. This lot is not on the freeway. This lot is not consistent with what the precedent was set for Fraser Heights, and this development is not what the residents of Fraser Heights wanted. And it's only been out now for a couple of months, I think, two and a half months, whatever, since the first ladder one -- since the first ladder one out on this project. And now the community has become very aware of it and are really getting involved. And you'll see a lot of people here tonight, and those particularly with the little green logo ribbon here, who are all from Fraser Heights, and we're all upset at what you're doing here in this proposal.
Just to clarify, so what we're doing here is having a public hearing to hear how people feel about this proposal. This is not the city's proposal. This is an applicant's proposal.
I understand.
Just clarifying that.
Well, no, I'm sorry. If I misspoke, I apologize.
No, that's okay.
Obviously, it's a developer making it forward. As a matter of fact, this RF twelve seems to be starting to run rampant now. All of a sudden, you get a couple of them up against the freeway. You've got forty-one, I believe, in this subdivision out of fifty-three lots. Over at 110th and 156th, we had a guy by that lot. He wanted to stick some in there, too. Well, there's a lot more residents around that area than there is around this particular park, and most of it's vacant with a couple of streets full of people. But there, the residents got very active very quickly and started opposing the RF twelve lots. And that developer withdrew the proposal for RF twelve. We would hope that the same would happen here. If that not being the case, we would urge council in the most urgent way to refer this back to the planner and back to the developer to hold a public information session, because to the best of my knowledge, nothing has ever happened in any way of any public information to the residents, and we would like to hear an explanation of just how this thing came about and just why. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Martin, I'm sorry I didn't see that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I just, this is through staff. Can I get clarification? Has there been no public consultation done on this project?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Pre-notification letters were mailed to the neighborhood, and I understand that the applicant did do some consultation with some of the residents immediately east of, excuse me, this development proposal, but there was not a public information meeting.
Thank you. Next speaker, Renalda Demetrick.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Honorable Council Members. I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity, first of all, to voice our concerns. And I have written several letters of concern and have heard a response. I should clarify, I am Renalda Demetrick, and I live on 10311 on 167th Street, so I'm on the east side, and my home is going to be getting to overlook several years of construction. So I have had the opportunity as well to meet with Ms. Stephanie Long, who's a developer with the city, and had the opportunity to talk to one of the developers. So I want to thank you, first of all, for making some adjustments to the original proposal by the developers and addressing a few of the points of concern that were raised. However, there are significant remaining concerns that I have and absolutely oppose the current plan as it exists. With regards to the RF twelve zoning, I see on page two in the fifty-seven-page document that I was trying to review, that the developer has indicated their rationale for the RF twelve zoning as being consistent with the proposed zoning on the south side of Parkview. So those are the ones that are right beside the highway number one. And I actually, living on 167, I was not aware of this until right before the public hearing. So the developer or whoever neglected to put the information on 104, where most people and residents would have access to that information notifying them of potential development going on. I actually can see down onto Parkview Place, and I didn't see the signs until about a week before this night occurred. So it's no surprise to me that there were not very many people here present to speak on that behalf, because not many people were aware. So in regards to the rationale saying it's consistent with the proposed zoning, which is now RF twelve for that south side, I am concerned because I do not feel this is, as per the City of Surrey's Neighborhood Compatibility Plan and the two thousand thirteen official community plan, it states that new developments need to be appropriate with established neighborhood quality, look, feel, and style before a development. So I don't see how their rationale of saying that an RF twelve zoning is consistent with their own proposed development plan south. So I don't feel that that is some, I feel that there should be some consideration given and minimal different zoning for the location of the proposed homes within the development as opposed to the ones adjacent that are affecting established neighborhood houses. People who are buying into this will at least have an opportunity to purchase a home knowing what it's going to look like. We don't have that luxury. We are already existing landowners. So I would like to request at minimal additional space be added into these existing homes. I can only speak to the homes that are beside mine on 167, simply because I haven't had the hours required to go through the fifty-seven pages. However, I did look at those, lots twenty to twenty-six, and I've written that previously in some of my concerns, and I haven't, some of it has been adjusted. I know they have taken out one lot to accommodate and increase the width. Our concern is also about the setbacks. The developer has said that there's a three-meter buffer. But again, I don't see how a rose shrub on somebody else's yard is a buffer for me. I fail to see how that three meters is actually acting as a buffer. So I've asked in a previous letter to look at at minimal, making it a ten, instead of seven-point-five, making it a minimum of ten, ten-meter setback, if this is going to be My last concern is related to the tree loss concerns, and I have looked extensively at the research and have been in contact with Dr. Brow from UDC, who has been contracted, I understand, by the government of Canada and province of B.C. as related to air pollution and health concerns. I have relayed some of the specific data and information. I won't go into that now. But I have requested a health impact assessment, but I was not able to locate that on the planning and development report, and I'm not sure if there's someone who can speak to that request, where that stands. So if that is able to be looked into. I do have three young children. We love being outside, which is why we purchased this place in the first place. And yeah, we would like to see Fraser Heights, as aforementioned, remain with the look, quality, and feel of the established neighborhood, not the new RF twelves that are being proposed. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Maria Ray. Please, we've got a lot to get, council has a lot of business to do this evening, so please hold your applause. Maria Rayz. Maria Rayz, next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Maria Rayz. I live on 164-75-109th Avenue, which is nowhere close to that, but still part of Fraser Heights. I had only learned about this because I went to the association meeting just last Monday and found out that we are now looking at an area that wants to switch and change subdivision from the single-family dwelling that it supports now and incorporate RF twelve, which is a fair bit smaller and means that there will be a lot more citizens that live in that one area. The traffic, the noise, pollution, and other concerns that have already been mentioned are also my concerns and that of my family. Please say no to RF twelve. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Watts.
My name is Professor Rick Watts, and I live at 10345-167th Street. We're just a few blocks down on 167, and we back on to the proposed new development. So Madam Mayor and Honorable Counselors, first of all, let me say thank you for your patience, and you've got a lot to get through, so thanks for hearing us. Not to be too dramatic, I travel a lot throughout the world, and I really do appreciate that we can actually participate in your decision-making. That's a tremendous privilege, so thank you. As we speak, world leaders in Paris are facing up to the reality of climate change. We're not responsible for what happens internationally, but we in Surrey can do our bit, it seems to me. And thank you, actually, for designating yourselves as a green city. We like that, Green Surrey. And again, I want to say, too, I've seen the waste disposal program. I've seen those around the world, and what you do is brilliant, so thank you for that. I really appreciate it, too. Now, as to the proposal before you tonight, while seemingly small in the scale of things, it actually is great concern to those of us who perhaps more than anyone else in this room have demonstrated our commitment to this neighborhood. We've done this through twenty years of looking after our houses and our yards, of keeping our neighborhoods clean, of teaching in its schools, looking out for one another, holding Canada Day street parties, et cetera, et cetera. Now, I'm sure I speak for many when I say these RF twelve lot sizes raise serious concerns for us. We've already had mentioned the substantial loss of green canopy. We stand to lose an area, beautiful row of diverse mature trees, thirty to forty feet high, that border our backyards. They're going to go. And the bird and animal life that goes with it. It seems likely that this will not recover because small lots are simply not amenable to mature tree regrowth. There is also the potential increase in noise, radiant summer heat, higher traffic pressures on local streets that were never designed to carry it. I live in this area. I know what it looks like. Extra stress on infrastructure, et cetera, et cetera. And I should point out that I did not receive any notification about those previous readings that were mentioned to the south, so I'm somewhat concerned about that. Now, we appreciate that development must happen, and we are happy for others to share this lovely area, but please, not at the cost of not only us but our new neighbors, who will lose the very thing that we and they have moved here for, and that is Fraser Heights' wonderful livability. Fortunately, it seems to me that there is, in fact, one easy solution to all of this, one single, easily-implemented decision that will resolve all of these concerns. Surrey Council can hold its head high for keeping its word in requiring all new development to be consistent with established housing. Developers will get to develop. New neighbors will get to come. And all of us who actually live here will continue to enjoy the area for what it currently is. And what's that solution? Permit RF-size lots only. Say no to anything smaller. Do that one thing, and we are, all of us together, well on our way. Thank you again, Madam Mayor, Honorable Counselors, for your very kind attention.
Thank you for your comments. Counselor Wood.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I actually am going to withdraw my question. I got my answer by looking at material. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker is Heather Nelson. Heather Nelson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm speaking to you tonight. My name is Heather Nelson, 10674 Salisbury Drive in Surrey. I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of the Fraser Heights Community Association regarding the proposal before us. This development is slated to have fifty-three lots with forty-one RF twelve lots, eleven RF lots, and one C.D. lot that currently houses a dilapidated former nursery along with one residence. The proposed forty-one RF lots, approximately three thousand four hundred and forty-five square feet in size, are only half the size of the majority of lots throughout the community. The existing RF lots are built out with four to five homes per acre. The RF twelve lots will be built with ten to twelve homes per acre, all capable of housing a suite and with very small yards. This factor has raised strong negative concerns for many residents who are now aware of this proposed development. It is felt that this heightened density will have several negative impacts on not only the residents of the Parkview area, but on many more. What were the features of this community that drew buyers to Fraser Heights over the years? Being a director for now twenty years, it's hard to believe twenty years have gone by, I have asked many, many residents, why did you come to Fraser Heights? And repeatedly, we have heard it was the low density of the lot sizes, the size of the homes, the more mature trees throughout the area that were rapidly disappearing in others they had visited, quality schools, recreation facilities, a major shopping center close by, easy access to Vancouver, the eastern Fraser Valley, now the airport, and ferries and the U.S. border. For the most part, I feel that they sensed would be a wise buys-buy for their family. The majority bought as second or third-time own buyers. Most were not first-time buyers. Residents are now strongly opposed with grave concerns it would possibly set a precedent regarding density in other areas of Fraser Heights. In addition to the density issue, they are concerned with the loss of the stands of mature trees that grow adjacent to the widened number-one freeway in the Parkview area. There are several that are slated to be removed to allow for the smaller lots. In addition to their beauty, they are valued for noise abatement and absorption of the millions of dust particles that rise from the thousands of vehicles that daily travel the freeway, ever-increasing as the population grows in the eastern Fraser Valley. This past summer, we all watched as many young plantings outside the noise-abatement wall and on the median turn brown and die due to the extremely dry weather. It was the large mature trees that survived to cool the area, so valued in those types of conditions. All of Fraser Heights is wrapped in major freeways now with the SFR to the north, the 176 truck convoys on the east, and the freeway on her north side. With regard to increased school enrollments, we have learned that there are still some openings at Bothwell Elementary. At Fraser Heights Secondary, the current population is one thousand three hundred and eighty-five students with the additional use of four portables, down from the previous sixteen that were in use prior to the expansion. These additional portables are slated to be moved to other schools in the district, and it was mentioned the school could probably hold another one hundred students as long as a school district allowed more portables. But that would mean overcrowding all over again, and residents have no desire to face that status a second time. We feel there are great concerns regarding parking in the area of the RF twelve homes that could, with a suite, each possibly have four to five cars, with a single garage possibly filled with personal belongings. The new streets would definitely be clogged with cars. In summary, we strongly are opposed to the RF twelve homes proposed in this plan. Thank you for listening to our concerns, and we trust that you will take them into consideration as you make your deliberations regarding this project.
Thank you very much, Heather. I have no one else signed up to speak to this bylaw. Is there anyone... Is there anyone wishing to speak to this bylaw? One, two, three. Okay, we'll start over here, ma'am.
Good afternoon, City Councillors. Good afternoon and audience. My name is Michelle Liu. I live at 15686 107th Avenue, Fraser Heights. I moved to Fraser Heights, moved to Surrey just eight years ago. Why I moved to here? Because I love the environment, because the school, they're close by, the house is beautiful, the street is not of a tree there. Only eight years, I love this place deeply. I made a friend and my kids love there. I don't want any change. I want the as-is, same law, same big law, RF. I want every family have a front yard, have a backyard. I noticed on the 160th Street, just across the community centre, there have some special improvement for the RF-12 house. One of my friends lives there, they're so suffering. In the summer, when we join our family, you know, enjoy the beautiful weather at our backyard, there are no backyards, they only have driveway. I don't want the RF-12, the small law, come to our community. I want to keep the balance. I don't want to make, you know, high density there. I want my neighbour, as same as me, can enjoy the family life with the kids at the backyard, front yard, at the environment. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I think there's another speaker on this side? Yes, sir. Yeah. And then I think there's one on this side here. You. And where?
My name's Marty Van der Zam. I'm from 10065 173rd Street, long-time resident of Fraser Heights. And I guess you don't have to be living there for a long time to see that it's obviously a special place, a passion please of all the people here tonight. It's rare in Surrey nowadays, quiet streets and wildlife and trees, it's a thing of the past, but there's still a little bit of that left in that area and we want to save it. And it's quite obvious by the comments of the park manager that we're not going to see any more park land in that area because she feels, twice she said it, that we are well-served. By whom's standard, may I ask, was that established, that we are well-served? Because the world that I'm from, the city with the most parks wins. And I think that we are not well-served, I think that we are very underserved and I think that our neighbourhood is because we still have a little bit left worth fighting for, our streets are still pretty quiet and I think that once you allow something like that, it's a cancer. Because at my neighbourhood, we have a green sign-up and instantly, all the neighbours next door said, "Well, if we become a Clayton Heights, I'm out of here." So, the neighbours on all sides, they need new roots, 20, 30 grand, nobody's putting new roots in their house. So, the neighbour, "Why not?" "Huh, huh, my house is only land value. If that's what's coming, they're going to knock my house down." So, starting to ghetto-fy. So, every time you let a cancer in, two neighbours sell and a hundred have to fight. Now, I know something else, being born and raised in Surrey, and there ain't too many of us left, but what I've learned in my 60 years of living here is, aren't the people that talk tonight, five minutes after we leave this podium, you don't remember our names. But all these people, I notice, they have enough smarts to hire a consultant who has a very good relationship with the city, he's in there every day, he knows every one of you people by first name, and like any rule of business, relationship is good business. And I know one thing, they're going to tweak and they're going to give and they're going to compromise and they're going to get, like every other place in Fraser Heights, development. They're going to change a few little things, "Oh yeah, we'll tweak," and you guys will always give like you always have and the battle for Fraser Heights is still on. Now, it'll probably be gone by the time I'm dead and it's sad because one day, you're going to look at the city of Vancouver and they have no parks compared to what we could have, right? And you can save, you can save some of the trees, you can save some of the lifestyle, it's a quiet neighbourhood, leave that zoning the way it is, it don't got to be cut up into Clayton Hill, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You, sir, yes.
Thank you, Council, and good evening. My name is Dan Zizik. I live at 10531 Arbuthnotes Wind. I actually submitted a letter earlier today, I hope you've all had a chance to review it. As you can tell from the comments already made, we are all very passionate about the community that we live in. I'm not going to rehash my letter or even speak very much to the notes that I have here other than just add a couple of other points because I agree fully with what I've already heard tonight about the tree preservation, about the traffic congestion, about the overcrowding in the schools, all of it. Just a point though on the trees, when you add up all of these applications, and I think there's four of them in total, the total number of trees being removed, I believe, is 434. This comes out of the reports that I researched over the weekend. 434 mowed down and 25 being saved. Now, I know we're going to replace some of those trees, but as the speaker spoke up earlier, putting up a little twig is not the same as cutting down a mature red western cedar. So, I do want the Council to seriously consider this from the basis of the tree preservation. As far as the people that are here tonight, myself included, most of us did not know about this until very recently. And it sounds like even from some comments from Council, that you may not recall the two previous applications that were approved in March of this year. Now, I know that you guys do a tonne of business, I don't expect you to remember everything, but I suspect that those two were approved without very much opposition. And there wasn't much opposition because as was also pointed out, nobody knew about it, nobody knew about it. Why didn't we know about it? Well, it's because these lots are tucked away south of 104. We all drive down 104, it's a super-busy road and we see the signs that have recently come up, here we are to talk to it, but we did not see signs for those two previous development proposals. If we had, if I had, I would have been here way back in March because I would have been very concerned that you would have set a precedent by approving RF-12 for those first two applications. Now, we already have a 16-lot subdivision of RF-12 and a seven-lot subdivision of RF-12.
Just to clarify what the notification process is, I believe the parameters are, if I am correct, 300 metres? 100 metres as a development sign and then public notification through either the website or the, we're legislatively required to also put it in the paper, so sorry about that, but there is a particular process we have to follow that's defined.
Thank you for the apology and I understand and my bad. I don't go to the Surrey, City of Surrey website to search for these kinds of things and I probably should, I probably should. But you know, I am probably like most citizens within my community, we aren't as diligent in looking for this kind of information. We rely upon those green signs and then that tweaks us to make some inquiries. And we also rely upon the good judgement of our Council to look at each proposal and to assess, does this make sense? Is this a precedent-setting move? Is this what the community really wants? And I think what you have heard loud and clear tonight is that we are quite loudly and adamantly saying no to RF-12 because it is not consistent with the character of Fraser Heights and it does not provide for protection of the environment, the trees, and it is also going to cause problems in terms of traffic and congestion and whatnot. So, as a concerned citizen, I ask all of you, as you consider this proposal, to not take those first two applications as precedent and allow them to sway your decision here because I do notice in the rationale that it does state that the 53 or 54-lot proposal is consistent with the previous two that have been approved. I'm pretty sure that if we had all known about those previous two, we would have been here with bells on saying no. Thank you.
Fair comment, thank you. Have we got anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? You, sir? Okay. And anyone after this gentleman? One more? Okay. Go ahead, sir.
Madam Mayor, thank you. My name is Norm Hall. I'm with ArborTech Consulting. I'm the project arborist on this application. I've heard some comments about some adjacent applications, I'm not aware of the details on those, but I'm here to just provide a little bit of clarification on this application related to the trees. First of all, looking at the site from a canopy perspective, and I like to really look at the trees qualitatively rather than quantitatively and I know that staff and Council, everybody in the public seems to grasp onto the quantitative side more so. But overall on this site and qualitatively, we have about 25% canopy coverage presently, plus or minus, maybe getting close to 30, but closer to 25 in my quick review. After completion of the project, including the preservation of trees and including the planting of trees, I estimate it'll be between 10 and 15% canopy coverage. And then, qualitatively, while we might not have towering conifers, we will have canopy coverage that will, in 25 years, will very likely exceed that 25% of what it is existing. So, urban forestry management really revolves around the long term. I think most people are aware that it takes time to grow trees. We're blessed in this region to have a very fast-growing tree resource because of the excellent climate that we have. So, I think in the end, RF-12, RF, we're going to exceed the canopy that's there presently with this particular development. So, that's the qualitative approach. Quantitatively, we're losing about 100 assorted tree species, about 80 alder and cottonwood species of this development area, but we're saving a whole lot of trees within the existing park and ESA areas that are being dedicated. We're planting about 126 trees within the site, within the lots themselves. I don't know the exact quantity, but many trees in the ESA to be planted. There was comments about the buffer, a three-metre buffer along the eastern perimeter and just a quick point, there's 28 trees of large-growing size and we'll say large-growing for this type of urban lot size that are going to be planted in there and they will provide a very continuous buffer over time when they grow in. So, those are my comments for tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Councillor Viladuve.
It's probably difficult for you to do off of the top of your head, but can you imagine what the number of trees would be if there were RF lots in contrast to the RF-12 lots, the saving of the trees? If the project was RF instead of RF-12, do you have an idea of how many more trees could be saved?
Thank you for the question. I think the quick answer is I can't tell you for sure. I can tell you that as soon as that comment was made when the first speaker came up, that thought came to my mind and I did a quick review. I know that the design of the roads would be completely different in order to accommodate RF, it would be a considerably different layout, but in my experience and based on what the tree resource is here, it would be a marginally better tree retention scheme. The big benefit of the RF-12 would be that there would be an opportunity to plant larger growing species in the replacement scheme. So, the retention wouldn't be dramatically increased in my quick review, but the replacement trees might be larger-sized in scale.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your comments, sir. I think I have a final speaker. Is there anyone else wishing to speak after this gentleman? Okay, you, sir.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of Council. My name is Roger Jawanda from City West Consulting. We're the agents for the applicant. Some of the things that I wanted to remind Council on is, is when we brought this layout proposal to Council, we looked at the surroundings. The area is, you know, surrounded, to the north is 104th Avenue and to the, there's RF lots along the north side and what we've done is proposed RF lots along 104th Avenue, which is similar in width. The east side, the lots are approximately 15 metres wide with some wider lots there in the east side, which are similar to lots along 167th Street frontage. The site also is encumbered with Trans Mountain right-of-way, which is running on a diagonal and there's also an existing water course that we had to take into account, which is at the south-west corner of that area. And there's approximately 23 properties in this infill area and our application consists of 10. And we've also, at third reading, as some of the previous speakers have mentioned, there was three or four properties that are at third reading as well. Our proposal is for 53 total lots, one park lot, and the proposed growth density on this is similar to an RF lots, if it was zoned RF. We're at 14.17 per hectare and the allowable in RF zone is 14. So, we're just slightly over, but it's very similar. We're also dedicating a park area of about 11%, which includes the Trans Mountain pipeline and the water course in that area there. Along with that, we will be constructing some greenways through the site. There's a plan, they'll be running along Trans Mountain right-of-way along 166th Street When the pre-notification letters went out, along with the development signs that were installed, there's one on 104th Avenue and two on Parkview Place. Some of the concerns that the neighbours from 167th Street raised, we didn't, we weren't aware of any other concerns from any other neighbours, however, the ones along 167th Street did voice some concerns. And the concerns were around density, interface, secondary suites, also trees and traffic. The developer went along and door-knocked along 167th Street prior to coming to Council and we worked with staff after that with the layout. And like I said earlier, we've dropped one lot along the east side there to accommodate wider lots. The interface along the east property line, we've increased the lot, the setback along the back to seven and a half. The RF-12 allows for a setback reduction to six metres and along with the RF also allows a reduction. So, we've gone with a consistent 7.5 so that there would be a larger setback. The three-metre landscape buffer will include many shrubs and about 28 oversized trees to allow for a better buffer. We will also be installing a six-metre or six-foot-high cedar fence along the east The existing houses on 167th Street are sitting from property line about 17 to 22 metres back. So, in addition to that, the 7.5 on our site will be, the total distance between the homes will be 25 to 30 metres. I can let Ryan speak about the secondary suites, but the builder, there'll be one builder in this area and... in this area, and that will, okay, sure. Trees, Norm has already discussed that. Traffic, 104th Avenue is an arterial road, and most of the traffic from the site will be going to the west to get onto the freeway or 160th Street, which is also a arterial road. I'm not sure if we can put up the aerial, that shows that whole area, but, you know, so it's very close to 160th, as you can see. There's only one other subdivision to the west that will be affected, and some of the lots along the north side of 104th. Some of the other things that the neighbors raised were parking. All of the lots will include a double garage with a driveway, so you'd be able to permit four parking stalls on each lot. I've noticed the lots on 167 Street, they're the old RF lots that were around 7,200 square feet. Since then, the zoning bylaw has been amended to allow smaller RF lots. That's all the questions or answers that I've got here, if anybody wants to ask any questions.
I see no questions for you, sir. Okay. Sorry.
On the button there, Madam Mayor.
Later on the button.
Late on the button.
Counselor Wood.
Just, sir, in terms of public consultation, did you have a town hall meeting with the surrounding neighborhoods?
Like I said earlier, the only neighbors that raised some concerns were the ones on 167 Street.
Okay, good. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. That concludes bylaw number two. Oh, I'm so sorry, sir. I'm sorry, I thought you were doing a tag team there. I didn't know you were going to speak. Okay.
Hi, Madam Mayor and Council. I'm Ryan Jones with Qualico. We're going to be the developer and builder in this neighborhood. So Roger did a good job in explaining a little bit more on the technical side. But what I'd like to speak about is Qualico and our home-building arm is Foxridge Homes. Qualico's been doing development for 65 years next year, so we have a lot of experience in land development. And in Vancouver-Surie area, we've been building homes for 30 years. So the homes in this area are going to be very well-built, you know, of the highest standard. And yes, we will be building on RF lots, which are a little bit larger, but we will have a product type which is RF-12 that is going to be a little bit more of the price-point product. So what we wanted to do here is to give the public a variety of homes that they can purchase and different prices. You know, some of the residents that have spoke, you know, some probably have grandchildren, nieces, nephews, that do want to live close to them. And the RF-12 gives them the opportunity to get into the market at a reasonable price. So what this does is, you know, again, it allows them to get into the neighborhood and purchase their first home. What we want to do is Foxridge won't be providing suites for these. They will do rough-ins, but they won't be selling finished suites in this area. So that would be up to the homeowner if they so choose. So again, you know, we raised, you know, the community did raise a lot of good points that we did want to address. We think that the buffer, we think that the width of those lots along 167 Street are adequate, and we feel like this is a very good neighborhood and community, especially when we're going to be providing a green space or community park to really focus on community development and everything like that. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. You've now decided you would like to speak to this bylaw too? Okay. I'm going to ask one more time, is there anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw?
I'm very sorry.
That's all right.
Mayor Hepner and councilors and community and developers, thank you for listening to us tonight. I also am a resident on 167 Street, and I have also been there 20 years. I also have been teaching at Pacific Academy for 19 years. So I know the community really well. I know a lot of the families, and I just think it's a wonderful, wonderful community. Now, the developers have said certain things. What I want to point out is on 102A, which is at the bottom there, where the existing park, that little strip is, there are only three houses there that then go on to this 15 acres. So when they got their first section approved, everybody was selling except those three homes. Those are 29, 28, and 27, as far as I know. No other homes are in there to make comments because all the acreage is selling. So then when it came, so all those ones, those two got passed because really there were no neighbors to talk about it. So when it came to ours, and the only people who really are on this that are not selling are with 167 Street. So then we were the only ones in the know. So this is why it's been slow in coming that we have actually come before you and said we have a problem because of the nature of the acreage, and all the people were selling, right? So there was no one else to complain. I did speak with the developers, and they were very polite. I've heard they've got a really good reputation, so we're pleased about that. But they've been, they told us they've been 25 years watching this area and bit by bit buying it up. I met someone at the Fraser Heights Community Association the other day who said when they sold their lot three years ago, they said they'd put four homes on that lot. Now, obviously, things have changed. Now, we just don't want these tiny lots. We think appropriate interfaces, which is what the council has said in their guidelines is what they want to do in Fraser Heights, is to make the lots bigger. That's all we're asking for, that instead of 53, they go down to sort of 45 or something like that. We're not against development, we just want to see appropriate interface. The other thing is, they've talked about the buffer, they talked about the trees. The trees are going to be 1.5 meters. I'm a gardener. That is a pathetic tree. It will take many, many years to grow. Behind us, we're 167, I think I'm lot 22, we get one tree behind our garden and two shrubs. That's what they're saying they're putting on the buffer. Now, I just don't think this is appropriate. They should be doing bigger trees, they should be having more of a setback. That's all we're asking. Thanks very much.
And I think I saw a final speaker, yes?
Hi, my name is Sandy Fan. I live on 10945 164th Street. I've been living in Surrey for more than 10 years, and I've been, sorry, I've been living in Fraser Heights for 10 years, and I've seen so many developments through, during these 10 years. And then I would like to just to say that we all know that cutting down a tree is so easy, maybe in 10 minutes, but having the same tree go, grow to the same height, maybe we need 20 or 30 or 50 years. And then, like others, like other speakers has already said, our main concern is that in this area, with so many little houses crowded inside, not only traffic, not only pollution, not only no more trees, not only overcrowded schools, but also our own security. You know, Fraser Heights has so many houses that has basement, and then we all know that it can become the second suite of the family. So you see 53 houses here, or, oh, I'm sorry, okay, maybe 20 houses with basement, counts 40, or even 40, 50 families live in this area. And so many kids go to the school. Like one of the speakers said, before, the Fraser Heights Secondary has so many portable for the students to go. We all know, nobody likes to study in portables. It's hot, it's so small. How can students learn better? Now, we only have four portables because the school grew bigger. If more people, more family come in, where do you put more school? Where do you put more school? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, will move on to bylaw number three?
Is zoning amendment bylaw 18559. The addresses are 7748 and 7768, 155th Street. The applicant, they're Marquee Construction and Developments Limited. The applicant seeking to rezone the site from one-acre residential to single-family residential. Applicant is proposing to subdivide into eight single-family lots.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I have no one signed up to speak to this bylaw, and I have no correspondence relating to this bylaw. Is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number three on our agenda this evening? First call, second call, third and final call. Madam Clerk, bylaw number four?
Is zoning amendment bylaw 18560. The address is 14933 76th Avenue. The applicant's Armandeep and Tarshalon Ajula. The applicant is seeking to rezone the property from half-acre residential to single-family residential. The applicant's proposing to subdivide into two single-family lots.
I have no one signed up to speak to this bylaw. Is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number four? First call, second call, third and final call. Number five, Madam Clerk?
Is zoning amendment bylaw 18555. The address is 18320 68th Avenue. The applicant's Charmaine Plasim. The applicant is seeking to rezone the property from one-acre residential to single-family residential 12. She's seeking to propose, or proposing to subdivide into seven single-family small lots and a remainder lot. In addition, a development variance permit is being sought to reduce the lot width requirement for a double garage from 13.4 meters to 12 meters for proposed lot three.
I have no one wishing to speak to this bylaw, and no one's signed up, nor any letters relative to it. Anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number five? First call, second call, third and final call. Oh, except I have Counselor Gill wishing to speak to it. Counselor.
Madam Mayor, I'm just looking for just direction from the applicant, perhaps. I know that the Cloverdale Community Association was just, wanted to better understand the commitment to the garage sizes and the parking in terms of the onset parking, so I could press through the mayor to have the applicant speak to those two items, please.
Clarence Erchek with WSP Group. We are consultants for Mr. Bolser and Mr. Dorwood on this. Mr. Dorwood's office has been meeting with and talked to Mr. Bowle, I believe it is, at the Cloverdale Community Association. We did get some comments from him, and there was a letter attached to our rezoning report requesting a certain minimum size of garage. We think that their requests are totally reasonable. We do have a bit of a challenge on fitting a house size in the larger garage on a possibly lot one, but it's really where we loop the water main that is creating the challenge. And if we can work with staff to do that, we believe that their larger driveway and garage will fit on all the lots. And in fact, the variance we requested on lot three was before, before their comments, was our own personal concerns to try and enhance parking and better garage size and that on the lot. So that was why we requested the variance in anticipation of these kind of concerns. And we share those concerns as well.
Thank you, Clarence.
And Mr. Bowle, I believe, did communicate with Mr. Dorwood's office earlier today, and he was concerned that we didn't have a firm commitment on design or anything. It's just too early for us to do that, but we will work with him on that.
Thanks, Mr. Erchek. Next bylaw, Madam Clerk?
Is zoning amendment bylaw 18561. The addresses are 2685 160th Street, 18518, 18540 66 and 88, and 159 12 27th Avenue. The applicant's Perfect Chance Investments Limited and 434818 BC Limited and 080870 BC Limited. The applicant's are seeking to rezone the site from one-acre residential to multiple residential 30. The applicant's proposing to develop 185 townhouse units. In addition, a development variance permit is being sought to reduce setbacks, allow four visitor parking spaces required for proposed lot two to be provided on proposed lot one, and to increase the maximum number of small parking spaces for visitor parking from 25% to 34% for proposed lot two.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I have nine letters the council has received expressing concern on this or opposed to this bylaw. I have one person signed up not wishing to speak, and I have one person signed up wishing to speak to the bylaw, Mike and Sharon Blaney.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Mike Blaney. My wife is sitting, was sitting beside me.
Speak, King.
We live directly south of this proposed development, and we have a few concerns. I signed the paper as being opposed to this development because there wasn't a column for other. I appreciate the fact that an owner and a developer has to maximize their investments in the equity in the property that the owner wished to develop. There's just a number of things that have been said even prior to my getting up here. And it is, it seems to be a race to increase the density in our communities. We're building houses on top of each other, it would seem. And that's proven by the fact that these particular developers want to reduce the setbacks already. I don't know what the existing setback is, and I don't know what they want to reduce it to. But for Pete's sakes, 184 property townhomes on this site, surely enough, we can leave ourselves a little bit of room. When the original setbacks were designed, I'm sure the councils of the day set some pretty good parameters and reasoning for why they set them at where they were. I'd like to know what has changed. Are we lesser people that we shouldn't have the same space that the previous people did? I don't know how that works.
Let's just get some clarification from our planning department relative to the kinds of setbacks and the rationale around that. Mr. Planner?
Yes, Madam Mayor, the proposed setbacks, there are variances at the different sides of the development. The delegation lives to the south, and the setback there is six meters, which is matching the setback of the development to the south. Other developments or other setbacks are reduced along roadways which are consistent with other developments approved in the area and provide for a more urban form along streets and better interaction with the pedestrian environment.
So they're said, they're, they're recommended based on some of the contiguous applications or the developments that already exist? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. It's the context of the area that we look at.
Okay. It's matching your... It's matching your, the area where you are.
Several wrongs don't make a right. Pardon me for interrupting. What is the existing setback? What are they trying to take it from?
Mr. Planner?
Under the bylaw, the required setback is 7.5 meters. The proposed setback in the south is six meters.
So it's matching your, where you are to the south at six meters, and it ordinarily would be 7.5?
I know what mine is. I'd like to see a little more on the other side, that's all. As we all would. My other concerns, of course, I'd like you to consider that when you consider this entire proposal, is leave us a little space for Pete's sakes. They're going to be looking right down on our patio. I can invite them over for tea. The other thing is, we had a new school built on 28th Avenue just here a couple of years ago at 160th. It was full immediately. There are portables on it now already. And as anyone who drives down 28th and 27th know, they're building developments all around us there like crazy. Where are we going to be putting these kids? Can we not put off a little bit of this development until such time as the infrastructure gets built up to accommodate the number of kids? Even just a playing field for the kids that's safe to get to in our area? It's quite a ways to go, I know, right now. I don't have much else. I'm just concerned with the rapid pace that we seem to be going at, to take down our trees and to build houses on top of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Blaney. I have no one else signed up to speak to bylaw number six. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak to this bylaw? Yes, sir. And anyone else? Okay, you, sir, will be the final speaker.
Good evening. My name is Vladimir Rizov. I live exactly north of that proposal, 158th Street. And I think this proposal is too crowded for a space. What I see from these drawings, it's 185 townhouses with a tandem garage, which I can remind City Council here, we have already in the neighborhood two complexes like that. One of them is Brownstone, south side, and one of them is like east side, Caledon. These two complexes also creating lots of problem with parking around. 26th Avenue is 24/7 full with cars, which is narrowing space for driving going through. This one will happen also on 27th Avenue, building this complex with this amount of townhouses. I'm not, probably not developed in that area, but not with a tandem garage. There can be roll home, or there can be double garage. Parking spots is big issue in that area right now. And building this complex with a tandem garage will be even bigger. With this concern also for kids going, passing by between the cars, which is always parked there. This also complex has not too many visitor spots, which also where these people will park, all on the street. That's not enough, not enough for the people who live there already. The rest of the complexes, like with double garage, which is, there should be, or building the underground garage. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, sir. I accept last call. Are you, is there anyone else wishing to speak to bylaw number six? Fine, you, sir, are the last speaker.
Good evening. My name is Kyle Wright. I'm an employee of Mosaic Homes and the development manager responsible for this project. My address is 19159 Watkins Drive in Surrey. On the topic of tree retention, after working with staff and our arborist, the consensus we reached was that tree retention efforts should prioritize retaining healthy clusters of trees over isolated trees because it provides improved tree health and supports Surrey's objective of maintaining its tree canopy. Our project is proposing to retain 15 trees, including the two healthiest Douglas fir tree clusters on the property, which is 35% of the total protected trees on the property. When you compare these statistics to the neighboring developments, we, along with our arborist and staff, believe that this project is a great example of successful tree retention. In comparison, the two developments to the south collectively retained 15% of protected trees. The development to the west retained no trees. And the development to the north retained 23% of existing trees. And on a percentage basis, at 35%, this project proposes to retain more protected trees than any other approved townhome project of comparable density in South Surrey. On the topic of setbacks, I wanted to address the south setback in particular that was raised. Just to add to the comment from the planner, site grading of this property will actually result in a two-story elevation for homes along the southern boundary of the site. These homes will have south-facing walkout rear yards, and the precedent agreed to with staff was to match the six-meter rear yard setback of the project to the southeast, as both projects have two-story elevations and rear yard conditions. This proposed setback is slightly less than that approved at the project to the southwest. However, given that these neighboring residents will be facing a two-story building elevation with improved sightlines to the north, we feel that this setback is more than appropriate. Also, a comment was raised regarding on-street parking. We're meeting all Surrey parking regulations, including providing the required amount of visitor parking. And we're also meeting the new tandem parking bylaw, which was adopted six months ago. This development will also create nine new additional on-street parking spaces along 27th Avenue after the sidewalk is upgraded. And in terms of density, this project is compliant with the Morgan Heights Neighborhood Plan and is well below the maximum allowable density in that plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next bylaw, Madam Clerk.
Next bylaw, zoning amendment bylaw 18554. The addresses are 10734, 10752, 68 Timberland Road, 11807 and 11825 Tannery Road. The applicant is RDM Enterprises Limited and the city of Surrey. The applicant is seeking to rezone the site from light-impact industrial and light-impact industrial 1 to comprehensive development. The applicant is proposing to develop a permanent truck fueling, card lock facility and truck repair business.
I have no one signed up to speak to this bylaw. Is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number seven on our agenda this evening? First call, second call, third and final call. Next bylaw, Madam Clerk.
Is land use contract termination bylaw number 18529. The addresses are 11405, 11406, 15, 16, 26, 35, 36, 55, 56, 75, 76, 11503, 11514, 17, 28, 31, 45, 58, and 59, and 68, 132nd A Street, and units 1 to 5, 11502, 132nd A Street, units 100, 102, 4, 6, 8, 10, 12, 202, and 212, 11538, 132 A Street. So the purpose is to terminate land use contract number 179 to permit the existing underlying light-impact industrial zone to come into effect.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this bylaw? This is, yes, sir?
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I'm the property owner of 13292 114 Avenue, directly south of that property, and 13291 113B Avenue, directly also south of that border. Now, I got a few questions to ask the mayor and the council members. We have a creek running to the right of the property. Now, in regards to the creek issues, what has been, like, said or talked about in regards to that?
This is a, an elimination of an old land use contract that is now required to go into the underlying zone. So it will, it will do nothing more than achieve that which currently exists on the property, no more nor less.
So there is, in regards to any, like, creek or fisheries, anything, there is no, like, I would say, opposition to that?
I'm a little unsure what you're saying.
Well, because I am going through a rezoning process on that property, and...
On the property here in question with the land use contract?
Directly across from it. And in regards, because I reviewed both, there is Ron Gill, who sits over there. He has sort of wanting to seize half our property due to creek issues and fishery issues. And I'm just wondering why this land use contract have no creek or any of those issues associated with it, while our property, according to Ron Gill, he wanted to seize, actually, excuse me.
Well, I think, I think, sir, that in terms of what this is doing, this is simply an old instrument at the land titles office that is shifting to the existing underlying zone.
I agree.
So it is not a rezoning of any kind. It is simply a shift in an instrument at the land titles office.
I understand. Our property has been a nursing home since 1967, prior to RMS 1 zoning coming into effect, right? We've owned the property for 30 years of that, since 1985, and we've run it as a nursing home for 27 years.
But, sir, that is not the subject of...
I do understand, but I'm just talking about the creek there, right? Why does it give, I mean, who, like, Ron Gill wanted to seize half my property in regards to the creek, a riparian rule? After the fact that I asked, I was very shocked for him to say that to me.
But that is not the subject of the land use contract.
It has to do with the creek bylaws issues, because there's a creek running right there, right to the right, right through the property, right beside, all the way to Highway 17, right? So I asked Ron Gill what the situation is in regards to this creek bylaw. Now, I have all these evidence here, Mayor, that I was trying to get to you, but he refused to submit this to council. And I'm just wondering, like, what gives somebody the right to seize somebody else's land, half of it, right? And I asked for creek bylaws and whatnot, and he gave me a brochure, a riparian rule brochure.
And how, sir, does that relate to the land use contract and the underlying zone?
There is no creek bylaw. But how can a...
How does that, sir, relate to the item before council this evening? Which is shifting a land use contract into the underlying zone on this property only, not on something that you may have before council or before staff, that is not yet before us? What are your comments relative to the land use contract?
Well, it's just that there's a lot of illegalities and inconsistency in regards to one zoning issue to another, which is right across the street, in regards to...
All right. Let's see if we can get some clarification for you on that. I understand now what you're suggesting. All right. Can you, perhaps, to the general manager of planning, who keeps bringing these instruments forward for us?
That's right.
Can I, can we have, give a better public understanding of what this is actually doing? Because it's really housekeeping.
Well, it's not housekeeping, because it's like inconsistent.
Ah, sir, I'm gonna, it's, I'm asking my general manager of planning, please.
Madam Mayor, as you may recall, earlier this year, we had a report before council outlining the process to discharge all the land use contract within the city. This is a process that is mandated by the province of British Columbia. They've given a certain amount of time for all the municipalities in the province to discharge the land use contract in order to streamline, if you will, the interpretation of zoning. So it's not a typical rezoning. It is just a discharge of the land use contract, which then allows the underlying zoning, which in this case is light industrial, to be...
So I think, I think for the clarification of the speaker, that there's a suggestion that because we're going to an underlying zone, that we somehow initiated a rezoning, this has in fact been the underlying zone on this piece of property.
That's right.
We're initiating nothing.
That's right.
Okay. Does that help you, sir, understand what's going on here?
Well, we're going through exactly the same thing, because it, on, according to the tax form, it says our house, the property that we stand on...
I cannot, sir, at a public hearing on this piece of property, deal with your application.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, why is there irregularities, right? Sorry, inconsistencies, right? Between that property, right, in regards to the creek bylaw, right, when there is no creek bylaw in Surrey, right? There is none. It doesn't exist. So why does it give city planners such as Ron Gill to seize half my property based on a brochure?
We can meet with him.
Refer you to the city manager for a broader discussion on that particular issue. But on this application that is legislatively required, do you have any comments?
My comments are, why is it inconsistent in regards to the creek bylaw or the riparian rule of the creek?
I will put that question through to the general manager. Are there any inconsistencies relative to the underlying zone that exists here, sir?
No. And, Madam Mayor, there's no inconsistencies for this project that's before you tonight.
Thank you.
Then why is it in regards to my property that they can seize half my property?
Perhaps we can better help you understand the process, sir, at a different time, but this is, for this particular application, I can give you no more information.
All right, Mayor, I'm just wondering, then, if you can kindly take this as evidence...
If it refers to the application in front of council, yes. If it refers to your application, sir, not at this time.
I understand that. But we're at the point where I'm about to file formal criminal charges towards Mr. Ron Gill, right?
That's not something, sir, I'm going to entertain.
I understand, but for consistently blocking, blocking this application to council consistently, right? And it's been two years.
I will, that is it, sir. You can leave that information with the city clerk, or you may mail that information to us, but I can't entertain that any longer.
It was consistently blocked.
You can mail it, sir. There, the clerk has taken it. It's no longer blocked. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this land use contract bylaw? First call, second call?
I have a question, Counselor Starcheck.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To the, to the city clerk, when you were going through the addresses, I don't know whether or not 11538 132A was missed or supposed to be part of it. It kind of conflicts itself between what's on the screen and what's in the package. Okay, so what we're showing on the screen is 11538?
Do we have all of the addresses, Madam Clerk?
Yeah, so it's there.
Does it satisfy you, Counselor Starcheck, all of those?
Yeah, I just didn't hear it when we were listing them out.
Okay. Counselor LaFrank?
No, that's the one I asked.
They're still showing up there. There you go. Thank you. Is there anyone else? We should just speak to this bylaw? First call, second call, this is the final call. Thank you. That concludes the public hearing. Thank you, that concludes the public hearing portion of the evening. I'm gonna move into committee reports, cultural development advisory.
I'll move in with your seat.
Second.
Second.
Yes, I have Counselor Steele. Pushing a button. Okay, Counselor Villanue, could you push yours?
I did push yours.
Okay, you're not up, your mic is not on. There you go, your mic is now on.
I just, I just wanted to move in the minutes, I think it's important that there was quite a lot of discussion at the meeting about the successful endeavor to get the Gallery C off of the ground on 137th Street in Newton. It's a lovely new gallery that's being curated actually by the artists in the city, and this Saturday, there was a new exhibition and a panel discussion by three artists, one from Washington and an Aboriginal artist from Vancouver, another city artist in the gallery. And I think we're very happy that the artists now have claimed this space in the professional way that they're running it, so I would encourage people to stop by and take a look at it. And also want to note that we've done a major report on youth and how to get them more engaged with the city, which we'll be analyzing. And if you noted in the Surrey Cares Report, one thing that youth said that they most admire about Surrey is the arts and culture. So I think that's very encouraging with a young community that we have. And then the report also details, and Counselor Woods might like to elaborate, information that our museum has the Jaguar loom from the 1800s, and this is one really important piece that they are now having in the museum and are starting to share with the public. And it was a piece that was the precursor to the history of the computer hardware and programming due to the punch cards. So it's a very significant piece now in our museum, and I'd encourage the public to check it out. So that's all I have to say about it.
Thank you, Counselor Villanue. Have I called the question on that? No, I'm gonna call the question on those minutes, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Now the environmental sustainability.
I move the environmental sustainability advisory committee minutes of October 28, 2015, minutes to be received.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Heritage?
I'll move the heritage advisor commission minutes to be adopted from the 28th of October.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And recommendations to be adopted.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. I have two proclamations tonight. One is the Bi-Local Week, November 30 to December 6, whereas Loco BC presents Bi-Local Week to celebrate and bring awareness to the economic, social, and environmental impact of supporting local businesses, and whereas bringing consumer awareness to the purchasing power of buying locally shifts consumer spending towards locally made goods and services, and such a network celebrates business owners working together to create socially responsible, environmentally sustainable businesses in Surrey. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare the week of November 30 to December 6 as Bi-Local Week in the city of Surrey. And I have one more, which is a day for our common future, December 11, whereas our long-term economic, social, ecological, and cultural goals form the four pillars of sustainable development, and whereas the UN General Assembly formally adopted the tenets of sustainable development on December 11, 1987. Now therefore, and whereas a healthy approach to sustainable development will find ways to bring balanced growth that meets economic, social, environmental, and cultural goals for everyone's benefit. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare December 11, 2015 as a day for our common future in the city of Surrey. Corporate reports, first one, amendments to our district energy system bylaw.
Move corporate report R229, amendments to the district energy system bylaw, second.
All those in favor, opposed, that is carried.
Move corporate report R230, the award of contract for the roundabout at 108th Avenue and 156th Street and the multi-use pathway.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Yes, Counselor? Madam Mayor, just through engineering, I recall that at the time of construction of the 156 underpass, that the 108th and 156 infrastructure was permitted some pre-wiring for lighted intersections, so today's report dictates a roundabout. So I'm just trying to better understand when we came to that decision of a roundabout versus a lighted intersection. Not that I disagree, but I just really wanted to know the process.
Mr. City Manager, or City Engineer?
Through the mayor to Counselor Gill, we'll have to report back to you, I'm not sure about the timing of that change.
Just out of curiosity, did the Fraser Heights Community Association have an opportunity to provide any feedback to staff?
Not that I'm aware of, but I'll confirm that.
Okay.
Morton, Morton, same guy.
Does that satisfy you, Counselor Gill?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I'll call the question, all those in favor, the contract?
Yes.
All those opposed? That's carried. R231?
Move the amendment to this Fraser Surowojeria boundary to add portion of property at 1500 536 Avenue.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate report R232, the award of contract for civil construction works, package for Surrey Parks.
Second. Of the, yes, Counselor Villanue, before I call the question.
I was reading the report and the contract, and I just was curious, and maybe I just haven't been on site for a while, but why there's the demolition of the water park at the South Surrey Athletic Park? It seemed to be well-used.
Through the mayor to Counselor Villanue, in response to your question, the spray
park's quite old at that location, and it's quite an age, it's an asphalt surface, and it's not that well utilized, so, and it's also very water inefficient, and the play features are quite old. So we will be rebuilding the water spray park adjacent to the very, very popular playground in the park, so we think it will be a significant enhancement with a renewed water spray park and in a better location in the park. That sounds great, thanks.
I have five children, young children, grandchildren waiting for that to happen. Thank you for that. I'll call the question, all those in favor, oh, opposed, that is carried. General Manager of Engineering, you've got a better response for the earlier question?
Madam Mayor, I do have a clarification.
Thank you.
There was an open house hosted with the Fraser Heights Community Association, expressing their support of the project, that was held earlier, just clarify that, but I will get back to Counselor Gill to the technical question you had raised. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Business arising out of our public hearing, our first one up.
Madam Mayor, I'm gonna move three-third on H1.
Counselor Villanue.
This is on the...
H1, the very first one.
Six lots.
Six lots.
I'm not gonna second it, but... I seconded it.
Okay, it's on the floor.
Okay, well, Madam Mayor, I'd actually like to refer this application, because I think that there were enough issues raised by the community and with the petition presented by that community about the possibility of eliminating the walkway to retain the trees. There was concerns about, I know the question on parks was answered, but I'd like to have that analyzed and justified in writing, but I do think that the concerns about the possible clarification on drainage needs to be taken into consideration. And they also had an appoint, that I looked at the material, and they were wondering why, when just opposite that, there were six houses, why there aren't five, which sort of blends with the same cul-de-sac across from these proposed homes. So one lot less means more options to save more trees, so I'm not quite sure why we haven't sort of complemented that. But I do think there's some questions that needs to be answered, because this is a tree lot area that people have concerned about, and I have concerns about whether we really need that walkway when the other one has been shut down. I know there's the understanding about, it's the east side one that they, east-west one that they mentioned that was of concern, but maybe that could be clarified, but I think the community was interested in a referral back to see if we could make some readjustments on the application.
Counselor Gill?
Madam Mayor, I'm gonna be supporting this application as is, I'm just looking at the site layout. The site layout articulates a access point to the south that would allow one to go to the east to the park, and certainly there is a remnant portion of lands to the north which could potentially provide future access to the park when you're looking at east and west. So I believe that the applicant has done a good job in terms of delivering a single-family project to this particular neighborhood, and I think certainly that, you know, as the portions to the north get subdivided in the future, which is the remnant lot, that there may be an opportunity to be able to facilitate that east-west component as well.
So, I'm sorry, Counselor, I've lost you there. Are you suggesting that the walkway to the south, you're not in support of that?
No, so I'm gonna be supporting this application as is. When you're looking at the lot layout, there is a walkway to the south of the project.
Oh, and you're thinking the other one would go through the...
And if there needs to be an east-west connection, certainly, that opportunity may arise, once that larger lot to the north, which is the remnant portion, which is almost half the size of the property, would be developed in the future.
So not the north-south walkway?
That's correct.
Okay. Did you, you made a, you had a referral, but there was no second. Is there a seconder for referral?
I'll second that.
Secuting it?
Yes.
Counselor Woods? Okay, speaking, anyone speaking to referral? Counselor, you have, right? Anyone speaking to the referral? Okay, I'll call the question on referral. All those in favor? One, two, three, four. That is, that moves. That is referred, based on...
Isn't that a mayor?
Yes.
Was that a tie vote?
Yes, it was.
Okay, a tie vote is defeated.
A tie vote is what?
Defeated.
Defeated. So, oh, so the referral's defeated?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor of the application on third. Do I have a mover for that?
So moved.
So moved, send a seconder, okay. All those in favor? One, two, three, four. So what happens there?
A little bit of confusion.
Now what happens, Madam Clerk, was that defeated?
That's defeated. Well, then...
Madam...
We should refer back.
Yes.
Let's refer.
I have to wait for a majority next week. Counselor Gill?
Madam Mayor, just in the interest of time and the opportunity to deal with this application today, could we have Planning just reiterate the access to the park, given what we have in front of us? Because I do believe that perhaps there may be a misunderstanding in terms of the access points to the park. Just to have Planning reiterate the opportunities, whether they're now or in the future?
I'm gonna call on the clerk for clarification about what I can now do.
I'm not sure. Yeah, well, we can get council clarification and bring it back.
I'm sorry? We can get council clarification, what happens with the two votes we just took?
We can table it.
Table it to a full council.
Your motions can stand, and you can have another vote, once it has been clarified. City Solicitor?
We've got a reconsideration.
Reconsideration? I move a motion of, who moves that? Yes.
Madam Mayor?
I've made, we've made this difficult for you, haven't you, with the...
Madam Mayor, I think it would be appropriate for staff to give some of the information on the question, and then if council wants to reconsider the matter, they can at that time.
So we'll get the clarification that Counselor Gill has requested, and then potentially someone could make a reconsideration motion for whichever direction they wish.
That's right, Madam Mayor. Ms. Cabin, maybe?
Ms. Cab, yes. Could I get from the general manager of Parks, some clarification around that walkway to the north, too, right? Yeah, I see it on the... Oh, yeah, no, I got what you were talking about.
So, Madam Mayor, if I may, so what they're proposing is a connection that would run north-south, connecting 162 down to 162A, and there would also be a connection running east-west into the park, into the southwest corner of the park. There's no pathway to the north at this time, and that could be for future consideration. But at this point, the pathway is running north-south, east-west at the bottom of the park.
Satisfy you, Counselor Gill?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Villanue.
Well, just speaking to it, I'm, I'd like to understand how many trees would be saved if we didn't have that walkway and connection, because the community doesn't seem very supportive of the walkway. I know we are supportive of it, but that came out loud and clear in the discussion, so it gives me concerns. I know it makes the connection, but, you know, we have also closed walkways in that area, so I'm not really, that's not gonna change my vote, is what I'm saying. Madam Mayor, I believe the map that's up in front of you now shows the trees that would be impacted, so in the north-south connection, in terms of the pathway, there'd be one major, one tree impacted, and then in the east-west connection, there could be additional trees that would be impacted with the path. We're now looking at putting in basically a gravel pathway, which would enable a little bit more flexibility in terms of how that pathway could be laid along those access points. And if it was gravel, would that save the trees in that area? Yes, it would. We have more flexibility to go around the trees. Thank you.
Okay, is it, anybody changed, got a motion they want to put to the floor? As it sits now, it is a defeated application. Counselor Martin?
Good question. Why was the other walkway closed prior to this?
Madam Mayor, to respond to Counselor Martin's question, the pathway that was closed was on the southeast corner of the park, and there were some issues with that pathway. It ran along a fence and was not as open a pathway as we would like, and there was some issues in that access point.
Counselor, thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to point out to council that there is a lot of flexibility ultimately in the design. The east-west portion was a continuation of the greenway that you see there, and there's already an existing path there, an informal path that's south, so the main dedication was more for park dedication, and that's why on the previous map that we show, the trees were gonna be kept on long the east-west alignment, and only the north-south alignment had one tree at the top end which we can probably go around.
Could you put up that earlier map, the colored one, please, for a moment? I would like to ask another question. So based on your comments, Mr. City Manager, the greenway to the west is already constructed? Is all of that done?
Madam Mayor, I don't know, and maybe staff could help me out on the, what I meant is the green belt, not the greenway.
I'm just wondering how much of that is done and what that would mean. Were it not to go through, does it just stop there? Or is it a really important connection? Maybe the general manager of Parks can answer that question?
Madam Mayor, there's an informal pathway there, but it definitely does create some connection along that, along the greenway. If you're seeing sort of a green path, kind of from connection, the ability to get from 163 all the way through that greenway connection. So there is a narrow existing portion of parkland.
Okay, I see that. Counselor Gill?
Madam Mayor, just given the interest of time, and given that we have Counselor Haynot here, I'm just gonna perhaps, with my colleague's consent, is just to move that we reconsider this at the next council meeting, when we have a full council.
That's fair enough. I'll second that.
And is that an appropriate reconsideration motion? Thank you, I'll call the question. All those in favor, don't split on me, guys.
No, we won't. No, we won't.
All those opposed? We'll take another look at that one at the next council meeting.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Can I just clarify, when they're going to get back with information, if they would get back the concerns that were addressed during the public hearing with that information?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Hopefully, we'll have all of that on the table at the next meeting, yes.
Under...
Madam Mayor, sorry to add to the confusion. The city solicitor would like to mention something.
You're going to put a fly in the ointment, aren't you, Mr. City Solicitor? Through you, Madam Mayor. It would require, if it is voted on in a subsequent meeting, a new public hearing, under the procedure bylaw.
A reconsideration?
If the motion to reconsider is adopted...
We're just referring back.
No, we're going to refer it to...
A case of a bylaw shall mean, commencing with first reading, a case of a bylaw which requires a public hearing, a new public hearing shall be required.
We've done reconsiderations.
Can we just refer it back?
You could reconsider it, referring it back to staff.
Yes, we could refer it back, because I know that I could bring back a reconsideration motion on it. So this is really a referral back to you to come back to us, so, yeah.
Good.
Unless I'm wrong, that's... Okay, let's move on to bylaw number two.
Madam Mayor?
Counselor Gill?
Madam Mayor, I'm just going to take the opportunity to suggest that we refer this one back to staff. I think that it was clear that we needed more public input, and the concerns around the RF-12 lots is something that we need to deal with, so I'm going to propose that we send this back to staff, and perhaps have that level of engagement with the community.
Second. Yes.
Yes, I agree.
And I would certainly suggest there should be a public information meeting, so that everyone clearly understands, but there's no support for those RF-12s. So I'll call the question on that referral. All those in favor? I'm in favor. And opposed? That is carried.
Move third on three.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried.
Move third on four.
Second.
All those...
Madam Mayor? On B1, you didn't have the vote on the reconsideration part to refer it back to staff?
Referral back?
Yes, we did.
Yes, we did.
It was, you know, all those in favor of that referral on B1? I thought we did that, and I was hoping there wasn't going to be a split vote.
No.
Yeah, that's...
Madam Mayor, I can just do the re-referral, and so I'll make the motion on one, that we re-referral?
Yeah. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Thank you.
Yeah, so you did that. Okay.
Move third on four, Madam Mayor.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move third on five.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Madam Mayor, on five, move that council support the issuance of a DVP 7915016500 upon final adoption of the related bylaw.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move third on six.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? I'm opposed? Carried.
Also on six, move that council support the issuance of a DVP 791501300 upon final adoption of the related bylaw.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Opposed? Carried.
Move third on seven.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move third on eight.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried.
Move final adoption on eight.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Nine?
On nine, move the DVP 7914037600B approved.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
On 10, move the DVP 7915033500B approved.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
On 11, move final adoption on 11, which is the downtown Suri business improvement area bylaw.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move final adoption on 12, which is the Cloverdale business improvement area bylaw.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move final adoption on 13, which is the Newton business improvement bylaw.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
On 14, move first.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move second.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move third.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
On 15, on the district energy system bylaw, move first.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move second.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move third.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
On the number 16, move the 2016 revenue anticipation bylaw, move first.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move second.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move third.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
On 17, on the 2016-2020 district energy operating financial plan, move first.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move second.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
On number 18, the Suri 2016 to 2020 drainage operating financial plan, move first.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move second.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move third.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
On number 19, the Suri 2016-2020 parking authority operating financial plan, move first.
Second.
All those in favor? Pardon me, opposed? Carried.
Move second.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move third.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
On 20, on the 2016-2020 sewer operating financial plan, move first.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move second.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
On item 21, the 2016-2020 solid waste operating financial plan, move first.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move second.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move 30.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
On item 22, the 2016-2020 water operating financial plan, move first.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move second.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
On item 23, the Suri drainage parcel tax bylaw, move first.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move second.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
On item 24, the district energy system bylaw, move first.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move second.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
On item 25, Suri sanitary sewer regulations, move first.
Second.
Oh. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move second.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move third.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Item 26, Suri waterworks regulation charges, move first.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move second.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
On item 27, Suri building bylaw, move first.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move second.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move third.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move third.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move third.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Item 29, controlled substance property bylaw, move first.
Second.[1424.87]